Okay. Good evening, and welcome to the school committee meeting of March 25th, 2020. We are doing a remote school committee meeting this evening to keep our social distancing and to allow us to have meetings. So please bear with us this evening. This is something that's new to everyone, so we are trying this within the governor's request. We have to have a meeting and a lot of dates have changed. And the superintendent will be coming forward with you with all that information. But as we start all meetings, I want you to let you know this is being recorded. It's also being streamed live to people that are watching our Channel 98, I believe it is. So keep that in mind. I ask you to please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As I said, please bear with me. This is something that's new. We're we're shodding into uncharted waters with this Zoom. And obviously, everybody knows you're going to be hearing from the superintendent about coronavirus and the impact and about school closing dates and how the date has been changed. We've got quite a bit of information to go through. There's also been a date change as far as when the budget has to come out. So you're going to hear a lot of information tonight in short time. So again, please bear with me. Okay. An entertaining motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of March 12th, 2020.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Moved in a second. Can you, when you make a motion or second it, please say moved by Mr. Small, seconded by Mr. Boyce.
Moved by Mr. Small.
Seconded by Mr. Boyce.
Okay. Can't get away. I'm going to have to take everything on a roll call vote tonight, ladies and gentlemen. So we're already having a little technical difficulty here. Just bear with me.
Everybody is muted, and then Bob will unmute you for roll call.
I'm going to unmute them all. Okay, Mr.
Chairman.
Yes.
Should we, um, motion second on a roll call first before we do any votes?
Every vote has to be a roll call, but I will do that if you'd like. I take an entertaining motion to take a roll call vote.
Motion, Mr. Boyce, to do vote, uh, voting by roll call tonight.
Second, no, Mr. Small.
Okay, Mr. Boyce. Yes or no?
Yes.
Mr. Small.
Yes.
Mr. Scriven. Yes. Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Ms. Byers.
Yes.
Mr. Howard.
Yes.
Ellie Taylor, are you here with us?
Yes, I am.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Did I get everyone?
No, Mr. Colady.
Mr. Hayes, yes.
I'm back on, but I keep dropping.
Mr. Colady. I'm looking for a roll call vote on March 12th.
Like this isn't going to work out if we can't have a constant connection. I'm dropping off. I'm not knowing what's going on here. I can't vote on something if I'm off the, off the Zoom.
Tell Dan to go to the invite and call the number.
And Michelle's going to text it to you, Dan. We'll wait for your vote. Go to the invite and call the number. And you will get the invite number and the password. We were just waiting on Mr. Colady, as I said, ladies and gentlemen.
Did Mr. Jones vote?
No.
I'm going to go to Mr. Jones next. Mr. Jones, while we're waiting.
Yes.
This is approving the minutes, March 12th. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
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 Okay. So everyone's clear because we just had someone call in. They don't understand what we're voting on. The first vote, ladies and gentlemen, was to take all votes by roll call because no one is here. We're doing this remote, and it was nine, zero. We had lost Mr. Colady several times. So the second vote was approving the minutes of March 12th, 2020. Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Scriven.
Yes.
Mr. Small.
Yes.
Holiday.
Yes.
This Ellie Taylor, Ms. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Boyce.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Chris Howard.
Yes.
Byers.
Yes.
Bobby Hayes, yes. Okay, unanimous on the minutes of 2020. I just had. I'm going to turn this over to the superintendent. He's going to go to the response to the coronavirus crisis and impact.
Hey, folks. So we've been dealing with this since, you can just turn that on the TV, uh, since before the 13th of March. I'm going to give you some, some updates on what we're doing internally and some new information from the commissioner or from the governor, Governor Baker today, and how that impacts us as a regional school district. So far, as I think I mentioned at the last school committee meeting, we've been doing a deep clean in the district, which will be completed on 4/4, the original return date from, uh, from the closure. Whitman Middle School was cleaned on 3/16 and 3/17. Conley School was cleaned on 3/18 and 3/19. Indian Head was the 20th through the 23rd. Hanson Middle was the 25th through the 26th of March. Duval is the 27th through the 30th, and the high school is, is April 1st through April 4th. That's our cleaning cycle. Once the buildings have been cleaned, we're pretty much shutting them down. Most of the buildings are shut down now anyway, but we've, and we've restricted access to anybody outside of essential personnel, which is our facilities department. As of right now, technology has fielded 4,000 calls to their help desk since, since we went out of school for service, for Chromebooks, for kids with parents asking for help and with teachers asking for help. We've, we've received 150 requests for student Chromebooks, which will be issued tomorrow or, or issued Friday. We were going to have parents come inside the building to pick them up. Later on this evening, I will be messaging out to the community that we will be having a, a drive-by drop, uh, pickup in our, um, bus loop Friday between 10:00 and 2:00. Those will be script out for the community so that we can keep social distance for community members and for our staff. But right now, 150 Chromebooks are going out to the community. Food service has been outstanding over the past two weeks. We are delivering meals at a two-week interval right. When I say deliver, we have our guys from the Smart Center actually going to the houses, delivering boxes of food for our, our most needy folks. And that, that actually shifted from the grab and go to the delivery. And we've had an uptick. We service 46 families, 93 students for this, for this two-week period. Right now, um, this change is that the governor has now closed us to March 4th. I'm anticipating, uh, May, excuse me, May 4th. I'm anticipating direction from the Commissioner of Education. If anybody watched, uh, the news conference today, he'll be outlining expectations for us and what our students will be, will be getting, um, over this extended closure. I've gotten tremendous feedback on the part from parents about what our staff has been doing over the past two weeks. We've given them the expectation directive to contact their classrooms and their students to maintain a, a connectivity, uh, to make sure we're building our relationships. We've given them enrichment activities, um, so that students are engaged in learning. And that seems to have been going well. It might be different after the commissioner's directive tomorrow. There might be some more responsibility given to, uh, to our teachers and to our parents. But I'm, I'm very wary of overwhelming and already overwhelmed household. Speaking from experience, this is new. I have two kids in elementary school. My wife and I are educators, and we're both still struggling to get them on a routine of schoolwork and academics. I can, I can only imagine for someone who's working from home or two parents working from home, or if their status has changed and they've lost their job to try to deliver academic material that's, that's new to their student and make sure that that student is following through. So we're going to wait for a direction from the commissioner tomorrow, and then we will, we will work together with our teachers to deliver what a solid expectation of learning is through May 4th. I have a concern about equity as far as delivery of, of services to our special education students and for our ELL students. I just ask the community to be patient with us as teachers and administrators. We're working really hard in an unknown situation, in a virtual situation that none of us has ever trained for, that teachers and students alike might not have the virtual capability. One of the things that we've talked about internally is, uh, in a household that might have two computers, mom and dad and two kids might be trying to work all together. And that might put a strain on the device accessibility. So if students are in that situation, they can still, still get a device from us. Issues that are direct right now because of this virus. I'm going to be looking for, for the committee to take, to take a vote or make a motion to, uh, get how our tuition payments for pre-K and K are right now. I would make a recommendation that we suspend, um, tuition payments and allocate for some reimbursements based upon the closures, um, that we've experienced since March 13th. Uh, I don't necessarily feel it's equitable for parents to be, to be paying for a service for, for in preschool or kindergarten, when their teachers, teachers aren't there. Our kids will be still getting direction and information from their teachers in kindergarten and pre-K. But I think right now we need to suspend, um, the tuition aspect of it. And, uh, if, if the committee agrees, uh, suspend that and then issue a reimbursement for the time that our kids are out. That will directly affect our budget, and I'm crossing my fingers that, um, we wouldn't have to go to E and D to balance our budget because we will be saving some money in either transportation or, um, utilities or other services that we're not providing now. But I, that's an unknown to me. So that's just something for you, for us to talk about. If we wanted to, to do that now, we could, but that's something that's on my plate that I've had parents ask me about. And, um, and it's something we need to address. We also are probably going to be in the hole close to $100,000 for this deep clean that we've done over the past, this past couple of months. Uh, and that's probably where we're going to hit E and D from, uh, to pay for that bill. That, that price tag hasn't come forth yet. I don't know what we're going to save in utilities. We'll do a dry run of what it's like over a vacation in the winter or even an April vacation to, to see what, what the monthly cost worth was. Currently, we're not paying for a student, for a student for transportation as they're not delivering a service. And I'm not sure what that exact savings will be right now. We are paying everyone else in the district as they are working right now. And that was the decision we made through April 7th. That might change for some employees depending upon, uh, the commissioner's directive tomorrow. But we're holding tight. People are working really hard. I just, I asked publicly and personally from the committee, the leadership team, George Pharoah, Bernie Sandlin, Michelle, my folks, John, everybody in central offices has been really working hard, busting their butts to try to work through this and support me and support the kids in the community. Without them, we'd be in, we'd be in a tough spot. And our teachers are really working diligently at home. I see them, what they're doing on, on social media, on, uh, I'm on different social media page, pages. I'm on a lot of Twitter. I'm seeing a lot of engagement with kids, creative ideas. The Commissioner of Education said today that it might be an opportune time for kids to do things like project-based learning. He recommended, you know, even making, making some things, baking some things, using real-life skills at home. I already see our teachers doing that. I don't know if that's going to change from his, his directive to, um, but we're going to hold tight. The other thing about the leadership team is we're meeting daily via Zoom. We're doing check-ins with, with buildings and, and district-wide so that I have the most current information that I can disclose to you. This is uncharted waters for us. It's not, to George and I, this wasn't a surprise, so to speak, the May 4th extended closure. We were expecting April 27th, uh, like Boston and Everett had already done. But this is just an added week. We'll come up with a plan. We'll get it out to the community based upon the commissioner's decision and what he rolls out tomorrow so that we can keep learning, the love of learning going and ongoing engagement with our kids. Does anyone have any questions about the coronavirus? All right. Michelle's bringing me over a question.
Could you just announce to the audience that it's audio only? I had someone writing in that they can't see us.
Okay. You want to jump on there? It's audio only. There's no video to this.
There is no video on channel, on the Comcast channels or the HCV channels. It is audio only. You're only going to see, I believe, the Whitman Hanson, um, regional school committee meeting that tells you with 25th of March and the 10 members that are all here. And it's, it's our logos, and that's all you'll be able to see, ladies and gentlemen. So you will be receiving audio only. There will be no video.
Yep, that's fine. Um, so a couple of questions that are, are coming out. We are, we do have facilities, folks, making sure that the buildings are operational, pipes, things like that. We do have that. Uh, we do have folks working on, on those buildings. Right now, I don't know what regional transportation reimbursement is going to look like. We stopped charging for, for transportation. If we start, stop charging the company for transportation or for stop, uh, stop paying for transportation. And yes, uh, some of our pre-K teachers and our parents and our kindergarten teachers and parents are paid out of revolving. Those are the questions that came out at this. Any other questions? And I don't know if you want to unmute them, Bob, or not.
Unmute. I had a question about, from Mr. Small. Are we checking the buildings for pipes and leaks? And I think you just touched on that. Mr. Small had, uh, sent me that question in a chat. I'm trying to read the chats as you go along. As I said, ladies and gentlemen, this is a, a new system that we're all in its infancy, so we're working with it as best we possibly can. But does that answer your question, Fred? Somebody's in the buildings every single day checking pipes, checking the security of the buildings also to make sure that everything is, nothing's getting damaged or ruined.
That answers the question, so.
Okay, thank you. I'm just figuring out the chat pot, Fred, as you're sending it out, so bear with me. Thank you. Any other questions from any other members so far about Jeff's report?
I, I did have a question on the, the teachers and the parents. What happens if they're being paid out of revolving funds? Those are monies that come in and go back out. What happens to their paychecks if they're not teaching?
They are teaching.
Okay, so we're still providing services?
Correct. But we, we charge for full-day K, and our preschool folks are tuitioned in, but we're still going to provide that service. We have to provide for half-day K, and we've been charged, we, we hire a full, a, a full-day K teacher out of revolving. That teacher still have to provide service because those students are, are guaranteed a half-day program. So this, this rolled out today. I think we still, they're going to be delivering services for those kids. We have to figure out how we're going to continue to pay the salaries. And that's why I'm concerned about any savings that we have might be going to those salaries.
Well, okay, so we've got to, I mean, we've got to take care of these people probably through E and D. And we've got 600 and some odd thousand there.
Yes, but I, the other piece, I'm hoping, crossing my fingers, that we will save on some utilities and some transportation costs that will offset the cost of some of these teachers. We also have money in those revolving accounts already. That people have, were, we have money there. I'm looking at if, if we close, if the, if the governor closed us through the rest of the year, and this is an if, this isn't a, a definite. But we're projected out. If we ended up closing for the rest of the year, I'd be short about $100,000 in salary from revolving. That being said, I don't know what the cost savings would be in utilities from closing the buildings from March until June. And other services that we wouldn't be providing, such as transportation, such as contracted services of OTPT and our other contracted, uh, services from, for special education that we're not providing. So instead of looking at, I'm just trying to say, those are some of the avenues. I want to keep our programming consistent right now, but also make parents whole that they are, they're not paying for something that they're, they're not necessarily getting, physically getting.
Sure, and I think to the extent possible, we have to worry about our people too, uh, as far as that goes. Now, SJ Services, did they fall into the same category as far as a contract goes, as not being paid?
So, so right now, SJ Services are working on the cleaning piece, at least through the 7th. We'll, we'll have to maintain some sort of staffing after that, um, for, for April. But that's, since the commissioner or since the governor just released that figure today, I haven't had an opportunity to talk to Ernie what this looks like between April 7th and, and May 4th now.
Okay.
Okay, and on the transportation piece, just to caution everyone, that's a reimbursable? And I think they ended up being at 82% reimbursement. So, you know, if we saved $100,000, you're actually saving about $18,000.
Right.
So just to keep that in mind.
Mr. Boyce.
Thank you.
Thanks, Fred.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Mr. Simon X, so basically, we could probably, instead of looking at E and Ds, it sounds like what you're saying is, is.
We lost you, Mr. Boyce. Your connectivity, I, I can see you, but you look like the ghost.
Good thing Mr. Colady didn't go over there.
Have some type thing.
Yes, Chris.
Look, Dan, this is Dan.
Dan, I'm sorry.
Um, had a question, missed most of this because of the dropping in and out. Um, are we going to May 4th now? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes. We are, we are closed until May 4th, per the governor today.
Question to Jeff and the administration. If it goes best May 4th, what are we going to be doing for the full year? Because then we'll be missing two months out of the year. How are the courses going to be corrected? Because I haven't seen anything from my child to be doing anything yet, so.
I'm, I'm looking for direction from the commissioner tomorrow to see what we're doing through May 4th right now, and then if there's an extension after that. Right now, teachers are supposed to be supplying enrichment activities and connecting with their, with their students via email. Some are zooming classes. I know some folks are, are reading stories at the elementary level. High school level might change tomorrow and, and might be more, more course-based work. But the directive from the commissioner on March 13th was for enrichment and no new learning or no new grading through April 7th. And again, directives should be coming out tomorrow, or suggestions for districts are coming out tomorrow.
And how, how do you, well, how, if we go past May 4th, what do you think?
Dan, I, I don't know. I, I wish I could tell you what, what after May 4th looks like, but I'm really not sure. My hope is that we, 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 we won't. I have graduation. I have MCAS still out on the table. That hasn't been, uh, been taken, uh, hasn't been voted out by the legislature yet. The Commissioner of Education said today that he has a, a, an appeal to the Fed as a waiver for the state of Massachusetts to not be held to the federal standard of a standardized test for graduation. That also, he has an appeal to the, or a waiver to the legislature to waive MCAS 3 to 8 and grade 10 this year. The legislature has to take a, take a vote on that and move that along. But after May 4th, Dan, I'm really, I, I think once I see the guidance tomorrow from the commissioner, I could give you a better idea of what he's looking at for schools to be accountable for and be all over the Commonwealth. We're experiencing different connectivity issues right here in our meeting. There are parts of the Commonwealth that have no connectivity in their homes right now. So to tell schools that kids are responsible for, for things online that they're not able to do brings in the whole equity question, um, that I'm very concerned about. And the whole delivery of new instruction for parents whose students are sometimes not super-engaged, and I speak from experience. My own two aren't super-engaged in academics right now, uh, to deliver information. Yeah, one of the things Commissioner Riley brought up today is a partnership with WGBH for, for families that don't necessarily have the technology at their fingertips, but might have TV and might have WB, have WGBH available. So again, tomorrow, I wish I had more clear answers. This all came down at 3:30 this afternoon, and the commissioner said he's going to give some directives tomorrow morning. So we're on hold for that. We're going to roll information out tomorrow, late tomorrow night and Friday from our leadership team. And if it's after May 4th, um, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I just understand the same way you are with the way the, um, you're, you're going to expect all these kids to come into the, um, online to school to get classroom material or whatever. And if we don't have every child that ability, we're, we're changing some of these kids.
Yes, I understand, and that's my, that's a very, I'm glad you brought that up. That's an issue that I'm very concerned about, is the level of inequity within our own community and the level of what kids can do at home and what they can't do, even if we had a standardized curriculum. You don't have, the, the best thing we have are teachers trying to support their students right now in the classrooms, and that's, that's not, it's not available. So we're doing the next best thing of connecting with them, uh, with academics. And the, the big piece that I didn't mention is there's a lot of anxiety out there from parents and from some, from students. I have parents emailing me that they've lost their job and there's no food at home right now. Hopefully, the stimulus bill might be able to help them out a little bit. But we have to be, we have to be cognizant that our kids are home. They're not able to go and see their friends. They're not able to go and play a game. It's, it's a brand-new world for them, and to give them additional stressors with credit-based or coursework that's assessed is something that I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about. If I'm directed to do that, if it's an expectation from the state, maybe we go down that trail. But the social, emotional well-being of our, of our parents and our kids is the utmost of my concern right now, that we, that we're in it together. And the physical concern that they're healthy and they're staying safe and they're fed is, is our, is our concern. And that's what we've been trying to do over the past couple of weeks. We'll modify that plan after some direction tomorrow, and then we'll go from there. We're still, we're, it seems, we're at least at a day-by-day decision-making. Today, right now, we're on hour-by-hour decision-making about our plan, uh, to make sure our kids are healthy and secure, both physically and socially, emotionally.
Mr. Howard.
Jeff, I agree 100% with what you just said. Getting back to your question about the, the reimbursements. It's been a few years since I did this, but do we collect those in increments? And so are you, um, looking to do a full refund or would we prorate, uh, whatever has been provided for services through the last day of school and just give the rest back? What do you, what do you think?
We're going to pro, we're going to prorate, Chris.
Okay, so, so to me, that makes sense. I'd be comfortable putting that motion out there, uh, for, for discussion for the rest of the committee.
Second.
I'd second that motion.
Okay, please say who made the motion. It was Mr. Howard, and it was seconded by Mr. Small or Mr. Boyce?
Mr. Small.
Okay.
Motion, motion for Mr. Howard to, uh, do a prorated reimbursement for any tuition collected for the pre-K K program.
Seconded by Mr. Small.
Correct.
Okay, discussion. Anyone have an issue with that?
Do we need to discuss the proration date? Would that be the first date that we were out of school, right?
It would, it would be the 16th of March.
Okay, thank you.
I believe, John, we would have to prorate it by looking at the days that we were out of school, dividing them into the cost.
It's not the 16th because we're going, those were four, four days. It's actually last week. I'd have to give you the date. The 16th, 17th, 18th, and 19th of March are considered snow days for us. We're making those up in June. So it would really be the 18th, that Friday, the 18th would be our first day that we're not out. So we've only been out of school four days.
Right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we would prorate? And we would prorate, would we be prorating that by a hundred eighty days? Be probably the easiest way?
Maybe by.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Keeping in mind.
I think it's something that we really need to do.
Any further questions before we move to the vote? And keep in mind, the vote is going to be a roll call vote. Please say a name first and then yes or no. Any further discussion on the prorated motion that Mr. Howard made about reimbursement for pre-K?
Is this, I'm sorry, one more question.
Sure, go ahead, Don.
Is this full-day K reimbursement also, or just preschool?
Yes. Yes, full-day K and preschool.
Pre-school and full-day.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Scriven.
Yes.
Mr. Small.
Yes.
Mr. Colletti.
Yes.
Taylor. Ellie, are you with us?
Yes, sorry, could barely hear you.
Are you, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Voice.
Yes.
I can't see you anymore, Steve, but I can hear you. Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Howard, you made the motion.
Yes.
Bob Hayes, yes, unanimous, thank you. I'd like everyone to, to keep in mind, and, and I don't believe Jeff has said this, and if he did, I wasn't paying attention because I'm trying to figure out what we're doing here. There, we are definitely, probably, everyone in this room and everyone that I know has never seen a school system closed. So a lot of the questions you have, the commissioner, the governor, everybody that's involved in government have never seen this type of action. So I'm sure they're going to be making some daily decisions, as Jeff said, and changing as you go. We thought we might be back in school on the seventh, and the governor this afternoon extended it into May. So it's going to be difficult. Some of these things are going to change as this virus changes as we move forward in the next week to ten days, and if the number's flattened on the curve, and I'm sure you've all seen that. It seems like the only thing on the news is, is about the virus, and, and probably rightly so. So we will do the very best, the administration, to keep you all apprised of what's going on, because this is a very difficult situation, and it's very tense, not only for all of our members, but for every single person who works in this building, who is tied to this building, who lives in our communities, or the states, or the United States. This is something that has become very difficult, so I know it's hard, and I know everyone has tons of questions. It's just a lot of unanswered things because it changes, it's fluid. Every day it's changing. So thank you, thank you all for that.
Just one more thing on the, on the, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Uh, i- if I could just add, uh, you know, to piggyback on what you're saying, these are totally uncharted waters. Uh, but I would like to say, you know, from, for every teacher, every para, every person that is trying to figure out one of these meetings on their own with their students, uh, answering emails, making sure the kids are, you know, getting as much education as possible. Uh, I think we all owe them a debt of gratitude and thanks. So I just want to publicly say that, at least from my heart, uh, to everyone, thank you so, so much.
Thanks, Fred.
One more thing that, uh, has been a hot-button issue, uh, that I talked to Dr. Jones about. No matter when we come back, we will still be having, we're, whenever it is, we're going to hold a graduation ceremony, and we're still trying to work out proms so that students that are looking forward to things, at least their junior and senior year, can see some of this. I've asked the building principals about any of the end-of-the-year activities that normally go on to make sure that we try to figure out a schedule so that our kids who are struggling right now at home have something to look forward to once, when and if we return to school. So that's been a question Dr. Jones addressed graduation to, uh, to the families of the high school, but I want to let school committee know if you're hearing those. I don't know when we're going to come back to school. I'm really hoping it's May 4th. I'm really hoping the seniors still can graduate on the day they're just supposed to graduate. I don't know what the graduation ceremony will look like if we're still, if I can't meet with over twenty-five in a room, or thirty in a room, or fifty in a room. But we're going to figure it out for those kids, because it's something, we need positive, and we need something to look forward to. At least those are two characters that I could put out there for, for kids in the high school about their proms, um, and their graduation. And again, the end-of-the-year celebrations that we have in our elementaries and our middle. I hate to say that we canceled our eighth-grade trips, but that was really due a national cancellation. But we're going to try to put things together for our kids when they come back so that they reconnect um, and, and, and feel comfortable in the buildings, learning and living, and, and being with their friends again. So that's just something I wanted to throw out there before we went on to the next agenda item.
Okay. Everybody good?
Yep.
Next up.
So, so we've posted for, for the Director of Business and Finance, um, Mr. Tuffy with a smile said today, you know, it's been such a really easy past couple of months here, you know. Uh, he's not really interested in coming back next year. Um, so we posted for that position. What I'm asking is a, is a change in the way we're going to move forward with the interview schedule. Right now, there, out of eleven applicants, only three are certified, so I'm asking for the committee's approval. We were going to have multiple people from the community and the committee doing these interviews. What I'm asking the committee to do is to trust George, myself, and John to, to look through what we have and recommend two people to the committee for, for an interview. Uh, we can zoom with those folks. It'll be much easier for us to do that than try to convene a, a committee ten. Uh, I'm afraid we're going to lose the three people that we have certified. I don't, they're, they look good on paper, but they might already have a job by now. Um, so I know we were, we were going to have the committee involved in this, but I'm looking for the committee to change that and give us the, uh, ability to just do it ourselves, so we could hopefully by the end of April give you someone, uh, that you can interview if, if we're still in a Zoom conversation, at least do this as an interview. Uh, but we don't have to go through seven or eight candidates with, uh, ten or eleven people.
All right, I make a motion that, um, we allow Jeff and his crew to, under the circumstances of the virus, to, um, finish the interview with those three people to get this done.
That motion was made by Mr. Colletti, is that correct?
Yeah.
Seconded by O'Brien.
Seconded by Mr. O'Brien? Discussion. Fred? Go ahead, Fred. I can't hear you.
I know the committee, I know the committee was, you know, on the larger side. Uh, but there may be others available that could, you know, participate in a Zoom meeting. You know, perhaps, uh, you guys could whittle down the field to say five? And then try and have more, more involvement.
Sure.
There's only three right now, Fred, that, there's eleven that applied, but only three that have the credentials.
Okay. You know, because, I mean, quite frankly, uh, at some points during the day, I'm looking for things to do. You know, and would almost welcome a Zoom meeting to keep entertained and, uh, you know, the mind working, so to speak.
Okay.
I, I can invite you in. I mean, we're going to interview you three, probably going to give the committee two, um, so we can invite you in. I mean, I'm okay, I just, I'm more concerned about trying to get folks from both Whitman and Hanson involved in the initial screening.
I, I think the way it should work is this is when we're doing it. If you can make it onto the meeting, great. If you can't, don't worry about it. And then you submit your finals, but, uh, you know, if available, I would love to participate.
Okay. Anyone else? The motion was to, Don, go ahead. Unmute, please. You muted.
Sorry about that, thanks. Um, for this hire, would it be permanent hire or one year where we have limited applicants that we're choosing from? Is it possible to still post it as, would we want to do a one-year interim again? Try to get a better pool next year?
There, there, Don, there's, there's not a lot of folks out there.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm very concerned that if I don't offer a position to a qualified candidate, if I say it's a year position, they're not taking it. We're one of about five districts that are looking right now. Um, and we were lucky enough to get John, and that was just a, a phone call from a retired superintendent and said, hey, I had no candidates in real, in November. So I'm really concerned about this.
Okay, fair enough. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? If Mr. Small is going to, um, zoom in, it changes what the motion was. Because the motion originally made by Mr. Colletti was to let Jeff, I think exact words were, let Jeff and his crew. Am I correct? Let Jeff and his crew do this, and it was seconded. Now, Mr. Small wants to join in. Um, I can take a vote on the motion, or you can amend it. What's your pleasure? I want to move on, but we've got a lot to do.
So Bob. Yeah, I'm, I'm totally comfortable with it being a gentleman's type of an agreement, you know, with administration as far as that goes, however the motion reads, and, you know, they would let me know. I mean, I'm totally fine with something like that informally.
Okay. All right, Rob, go ahead. You, Dan, answer your question.
No, well, that, that, well, that's what I was going to throw out there is that, uh, you know, Fred or whoever could participate. And if you don't have the majority of the committee, I mean, at least they can talk it over with Jeff and George and still leave it up to them to make the final decision on it.
Okay. All right, Fred, you're good with what we're talking about. Any further discussion before I move to the vote? Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Scriven.
Yes.
Mr. Small.
Mr. Small votes yes.
Mr. Colletti.
Dan votes yes.
Ellie Taylor.
Yes.
Stephen Voice.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Howard.
Yes.
Spires.
Yes.
Bob Hayes, yes. Okay, thank you. Unanimous.
Okay, one other thing that I'm asking to, for the committee to, uh, to change, uh, during this time and this time only. Currently, we need three people to sign a warrant. I'm asking this time that we just, uh, you allow, or you, you, I recommend Bob Hayes as the signator of the warrant for this because of the Corona's vi- coronavirus during this time, that I only have one signature. Trying to, keeping people at a, at a, at a distance and having a limited access to the building is going to be hard for the rest of the committee. Um, the committee decision, but my recommendation, we'd allow the chair to sign warrants, uh, during this timeframe.
Someone like to make a motion?
This is Ellie, I'd like to make a motion to allow Bob Hayes to sign all warrants alone for the time being.
Temporarily.
Mr. Small will second that.
Temporarily.
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 Paul seconded it. Further discussion? Any quick, does anyone have anything they'd like to add in? Okay, we're going to do a roll call. Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Yes.
Chris, Scriven. Fred Small.
Yes.
Mr. Colletti.
Dan says yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Voice.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Howard.
Yes.
Spires. Bobby Hayes, yes. I'll give you a, a quick little story and we'll move on. Yesterday, I thought we were meeting here to, to do the second run-through for this, so I walked in, do my ID. I'm the only one in the building. I'm going, where is everybody? So I was, I was the ghost in the high school yesterday. I called up the superintendent and I went, uh, did I misunderstand the meeting? I thought we were doing another run-through for this, and we were, but it was remote, so. That was not part of me, but I was the only one here, so I guess we are safe.
One more thing on the warrant, I need, I need an alternate, and my recommendation for the committee would be to, uh, motion that Chris Scriven be the alternate in case Mr. Hayes can't make it, and, uh, Michelle can call Mr. Scriven, but we need a vote on that as well.
I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion.
Make the motion for Mr. Scriven to be the alternate to sign the warrants temporarily.
Mr. Small made the motion.
Second. Second.
Is that seconded by Mr. Colletti?
Yes.
Discussion. Bobby Hayes says yes. Spires.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Voice.
Yes.
Mr. Colletti.
Yes.
Mr. Small.
Mr. Small says yes.
Yes. Mr. Scriven. Mr. O'Brien. Okay, thank you. That was unanimous. Annual town meeting changed dates.
So as of right now, we were notified by the town of Hanson that their town meeting is, uh, moved from May 4th, I think it's May 4th, to June 15th. Um, right as of last night, Whitman is still holding to their annual town meeting the first Monday in May. Now, that might change with the governor's directive today, really not sure. Um, but as of right now, Hanson's town meeting, uh, is June 15th, and Whitman is status quo as the first Monday in May, which I think is the fourth, right? It's May 4th.
That would be the, uh, date that if they hold to the state, it would be the date the kids that come back to school, so that may, may want to get some people out of the house to go, but maybe not to go to town meeting, I'm not quite sure. I think Whitman is going to be taking them under advisement as they move forward, and they may be making a change.
But I wanted the committee to just know those date changes.
Any question, Bob?
Nope. Anyone have any questions?
Dan does.
Go ahead, Dan.
Um, when do the, um, terms expire?
You mean the, the school committee terms?
Yes, don't they expire a year after election?
So Hanson's moved their, moved their, uh, their election date, I believe, is June 27th now. Uh, and I'm not sure on Whitman's date. That's something we'll look into. The cha- the challenge I'm having keeping up with the changes in legislation and Governor Baker's uh, executive orders, so to speak, on things. They're, they're changing rapidly, and with everything changing rapidly, I'm not totally versed on specific dates on, on, right now on, on town meetings and, uh, and when school committee's out. But I assume if those stuff change, the term extends until that next election.
That's correct. Anyone else have any questions about any of the town meeting date changes? Mr. Small. Fred, you're muted. You have to unmute yourself.
Yeah, this is more to do with the annual, uh, elections. If I'm not mistaken, the way it's stated is that, uh, the person who's in office remains in office until a successor is named. It's not by time, it's, you don't, you don't expire, so to speak.
Yeah, that's correct.
Well, there's a difference when you vote, when you're sworn in. It could be the end of June, though.
It could be. As I said a minute ago, things are changing daily.
Yep.
So, you know, keep your ears on because it's going to be one of those fluid motions that's going to change, and everybody's.
Just another thing we do. Another thing we have to add to the list.
Exactly. Okay, old business. Everybody else up with the superintendent for right now? Old business. Whitman Middle School SOI update. Whitman, um, Middle School SOI, they voted to fund eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to move forward with the SOI for the middle school in Whitman.
For the feasibility study.
For the feasibility study. Does anybody have any questions with that? They voted that, yes, Mr. Small.
Uh, no, I'm just saying that I think we should feel fortunate to be in for this round of funding because I think we're going to find things to dry up very quickly across the state for a lot of different projects. Uh, so it's, I think that we're very fortunate and, and even though I know this amount requested, uh, given the fact that there will be projects drying up, it may even come in at less than that. We'll have to see when we put it out there, but that could be good news, so to speak.
Anyone else? I'm approved it, yes, that's correct. Um, that's, that's another whole subject with MSBA that could, a- as we said, this is uncharted waters, anything could change, and we will keep you updated as much as we possibly can because it has been changing. Regional Agreement Amendment Committee, both towns have voted to, uh, have citizens at lodge. I believe the citizen at lodge from Hanson is Mr. Young, and the citizen at lodge from Whitman is Mr. George. I believe the citizen at lodge from Hanson is Mr. Young, and the citizen at lodge from Whitman is Mr. George for the Regional Agreement Committee. So that seems to be shaping up, and they'll be having a meeting sooner than later. But as, as you can see, that committee has to stay under 10 in order to meet, and I'm not sure if they're going to do it. There's going to be discussions about how it's going to be done, whether it's going to be done on Zoom or whether they're going to meet because it's still, as we, as the numbers change with what's going on, and again, I hate to keep harping on this, but I hear it 50 times a day, the flattening of the curve, so to speak. If the numbers go down, the government may change things quicker than, than you think. And it's just, it's, it's going to be one of those where stuff is going up. But both of the selectmen teams have done their due diligence and made some decisions, so that's a good thing. Any questions?
No.
Okay. Student Opportunity Act.
George, it's going to.
Hey, folks, just wanted to let you know that the Student Opportunity Act, the last two times I mentioned it at the school committee meeting was also tied in with our strategic plan. However, as part of the Student Opportunity Act, it's also a separate, a separate piece that needs to be looked at and voted on. It was already constructed. What you have in your packet was the template form. Basically, in a nutshell, there are four areas or commitments that we had to respond to in the Student Opportunity Act. We did not receive any money in the Student Opportunity Act for these things, but the four commitment areas were focusing on student subgroups, using evidence-based programs to close achievement gaps, facilities improvements to create healthy and safe environments, monitoring success with outcomes and targets, and then family engagement. What I'm looking for today, if, if so, you so deem is that once you've already reviewed it, you've had it for a week, I will say, all I had to do was change a format from what you had because it was a Google Doc, and we were doing it with people not really here. But the basic thing we're doing is that we are looking to close the achievement gaps with our subgroup population of special ed, pre-redu, uh, special ed, ELL, and some of our early learning students. And we would do that by the purchase of our new ELA program next year and the purchase of what are called SUNDAY Level Reading Kits, which help our students who are both special ed and non-special ed, but identified at the grade levels as needing help with reading, and that would be that. We then also focused on the facilities improvement that's going to happen at the high school here for the guidance counseling area, so that all students would have access to one place for any type of need that students would have, as we discussed last meeting. And then what we would also do is have the, we chose what DESI would allow us to monitor these things, and then we also chose attendance for our counseling area so that we can track attendance of students who have poor attendance who access the counseling area. The fourth thing that we needed to highlight, and I just wanted to bring to your attention, was the increased commitment to engage different families. This year, under tutelage of Lauren, we really expanded the offerings we have for our special ed contingent under Michael Caponegro and our ELO contingent. We've also increased that. We're looking to increase it for everyone next year. And the last piece is the certification. And the certification is that we're asking families, we're getting the word out for our PTOs, and we've cut the word out through, and we've let you folks know what that is all about. And then now I would move to the full certification that you deem this acceptable so that we can put it into the portal of DESI. We are still looking at the April 1st deadline. The reason why is that's optional now with the new governor legislation he's passing. But truthfully, I would like to say, if you vote this in a positive fashion tonight, we can then get it to DESI, and then we would move on as this being a part of our strategic plan. But we would then look to soon finish our strategic plan and bring that to you at the committee at a later time. So I'd be looking for a vote to accept this SOA so we can submit it to DESI.
I entertain a motion to accept the SOA as presented in your packet, whether it be by paper or electronic, it's the same.
Motion by Mr. Boyce.
Seconded by Mr. O'Brien.
Seconded by Mr. O'Brien. Third by Mr. Howard.
Yeah.
Discussion. Mr. Small.
Uh, is this the total financial impact? And should we end needing to cut things? How would this play out? Where it's already, you know, been sent over to DESI as part of our plan, so to speak? And I don't know where the priorities are, you know, with your levels. And let's say, God forbid, we ended up, you don't have a budget and you're on a 1/12 based upon FY '20. And there's just no money to purchase this. How, what is, does this commit us to anything, so to speak?
Well, if it's part of our plan, I mean, we don't have a budget. I don't know if that, once we submit this to DESI and we pull that out, I don't know what, what they say. I think it's, it's rapidly free flow. If we don't have a budget, all bets are off, and that'll be our next conversation. So if we're looking at a, at a fiscal 2020 budget, all bets are off on everything, so.
Right now, the way the plan is written is that you have to submit your plan, and then you have a year in which, well, first you attempt to carry it out with the plan that you had written. So obviously, once you submit the plan, if that is a, if that's not going to be accomplished due to a fluctuating budget or the times of Corona, I'm sure that there are pieces to this in year one that we would have the ability to either change it, amend it, or at least be able to discuss it with them. But right now, the plan is that this is the plan that we have moving forward. If budget terribly that changes, then I'm assuming any other plan that we have with DESI, you have the right to write to them, amend it, and see what it takes from there. This would allow the commissioner and his people to say, yes, I think this plan is doable and you should move forward. We sort of, they would bless our plan so that we can move forward. That's what this would do tonight. We'd get it into them, so at least they would have it on record that Whitman Hanson submitted it because it is federal. And then if something changes once it's enacted or due to budget, then we would just have to alert them, in my estimation.
Okay, Mr. Small. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Go ahead. No other questions or concerns? Going to move to the vote, Mr. O'Brien. Unmute yourself, Robbie.
There we go.
Mr. Scriven. Mr. Small.
Mr. Small votes yes.
Mr. Colletti.
Yes.
Ms. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Boyce.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Howard.
Yes.
Bobby Hayes, yes. Unanimous, okay. Next up, F-2021 budget local assessment. I had some emails today before the superintendent and the assistant superintendent stat, and I can say more than ever, and I had some phone calls of us not vote this budget this evening because we had a lot of people that wanted to publicly attend. I was kind of shocked at the emails that I got and phone calls. I was, so, I'm not saying not to do this, I'm just saying I don't know about, I'm throwing it out there to see how the rest of you thought about this. The drop dead date has changed to April 30th.
That, that, you know, we're stretching it that way. We're really supposed to get something to the towns 30 days prior to town meeting, which would be April 4th. But what we've been advised, I mean, that's from Frank himself, it's the 30th. But if town meeting is now June 15th in Hanson, and if Whitman changes that, that gives us some more flexibility and some more time. I don't know when we're going to be able to meet with the public. And that's a concern of mine because I think the public can, can voice their, their thoughts on, on where we're at. But I also kind of concur with Bob. It'll give me, if we don't vote today, and even if we have to have a meeting next, next Wednesday before the 4th, giving 30 days notice. I'd like to speak with our attorney again. I'd like to see what DESI is recommending based upon the new legislation around regional schools that the governor has filed today, so I can be more proficient on that and see where that goes. So we can talk budget today. I'm not saying you don't have to vote an assessment today, but there is a little bit more flexibility right now because of, of where we are with the virus and things changing so rapidly.
Before I take Mr. Small's question, I want you to keep in, superintendent told us today that we're going to be taking $100,000 out of E and D for deep cleaning of the buildings. And tonight, we voted, this committee voted for pre-K and K to do reimbursements per day, which we have no idea what that's going to cost. I don't see that being a huge amount, but I do see it being a cost and with what's going on with the coronavirus or other costs. So E and D, which looked like it had 600,000 in it, is rapidly, and it's why it's there. It's rapidly diminishing. Mr. Small.
And that's what I wanted to say, where we're still waiting for some financial numbers of our own, and, and we're not 100% confident of where we stand. I would think it would be prudent to get the answers to those questions before we move forward to voting a budget right now. I believe we've got to do it, and the sooner we do it, the better. But I think that we need the answers to those questions as well. Uh, and I'm in firm agreement that we should also double check with our attorney to make sure that, you know, we're proper and precise. We probably need to go under the assumption, at least at this time, that Whitman is not changing their date. You know, and operate off of those dates because they didn't do it last night, so I don't know what would change, to speak. Those are my thoughts.
Anyone else? Dan, is that you?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Just, just want to put it out there. You really, you know, you've been going off E and D too long. And now, what they've always told, you know, I've said for years, that's just for emergency, this is the emergency, not to pay for the budget, to do these like cleanups and things. And this is basically going to make this budget of E and D pretty much disappear. It's going to be hard to rebound. So like Fred's saying, we just got to wait another week to find out what the state is actually going to put down on the table for us to have, and that's about it. We have no other methodologies to go after at this point. It's going to be very bad.
Yeah. So, so just one of the things, you know, I'm hearing different things about a vote on the budget, whatever. Um, one of the things that we had at the last meeting, we talked about what it would look like if we had a level service budget, so that $2.5 million, if we didn't have come July 1, if we were fiscally, this 2020, what would that look like as far as people? And we're looking at really 37 staff members. And if we have to pay unemployment to those 37, it's really 48. That's with a $2.59 million reduction. That's our, that would be our level, level funded budget from 2020. And then somebody asked me for a $1.3 million cut from our operating budget that we're proposing, and that would be 20 staff members, 20 teachers. When I say staff members, that's just strictly teacher. I use a ballpark figure of $65,000 per staff member. So it'll be 20 staff members or 26 or 27 with unemployment. So just to give you an idea, if we're level service or level, excuse me, level funded, that FY '20 numbers come July 1, we're looking at 48 people, 48 teachers not working in the district. That, that's at level fun. $1.3 million cut, we're looking at 25 or 26. I'm hoping we don't have to do that. So just to put that in perspective, there are 44 people, there are 44 teaching staff at Whitman Middle School. So, just for perspective.
There are 44 teachers at Whitman, everybody hear that? 44 teachers at Whitman Middle.
So if we cut 48, it'd be like closing a whole building.
Mr. Colletti just sent me a message. I'm getting better at this, I think, instead of worse. He wants to know what that'd do to class size.
Mr. Colletti, it would blow up class size. It would affect every school. We'd have to readjust our thinking of how we, how we teach, especially at the secondary level.
I think one of the pieces of information we're still missing is when we last met, we had heard some optimistic discussions between Whitman and Hanson in terms of kind of working out some level of compromise. So from my point of view, that's, that's still necessary and missing. So I, I'm willing to stand firm in my previous comments of I, I publicly would, publicly would want to know what that compromise is prior to making an affirmative vote on a budget, so.
I agree.
Mr. Small.
And while I, I can understand exactly what you're saying, I think at the same time, you know, we want to encourage both towns to talk and see what they can come up with, et cetera. But, you know, we're at the bewitching hour and we need to push forward budget. I don't know, do we decimate our budget and decimate our system? Or do we put together what we feel is the best that we should be doing? Not, and not even what we should be doing, but under the circumstances. And I can't see us going backwards. That's my own personal opinion. Now, we come up with that budget and how it's funded, that's the towns to battle it out. You know, that's my viewpoint, that's been my viewpoint from day one. And my viewpoint from day one is, no matter which way you slice it based upon the Mass General laws and how things work, we would end up at the statutory method. Uh, yes, it does a horrible thing to the town of Hanson as far as changing the dollars and cents amounts in a very large capacity very swiftly. But at the same time, you know, what we've got to do is we've got to come up with the overall budget for the schools to operate. And to me, I look at those being a little bit separate.
Okay, Dawn, did you? I'm sorry, did you have your hand up? I'm sorry, I thought you did. Go ahead.
Thanks.
Go ahead.
Right, I think we need to focus on our, our charge. We're elected officials of the school committee. So we know from the superintendent what the district needs for a budget. And as Mrs. Otina said at our last meeting, let the towns determine how to fund. But we are the voice of the students in this school district. It's up to us to set an educationally sound budget. As far as compromise, it's, it's not up to me to determine a compromise either. I would add suggestions on revenue if, if we're looking to get additional revenue. I brought it up at the last meeting about revisiting user fees. So my suggestion would be on a future agenda to add a discussion about user fees and look at where we're at and, and how that might add to our revenue. I know we have 600 athletes. If that increased by even $50, from 250 to 300 per athlete, that's $30,000. The second suggestion I'd have is an agenda item discussion about parking fees. There are area schools that charge high school students for parking. I, I don't want to charge kids, but we're desperate for revenue in this district. Even, I, I believe we have about 300 students that drive and park at the high school. You charged $100, there's another $30,000. Add those two together, maybe you have a teacher there. It's not a solution for today, but maybe next year. And the last thing I would ask our towns, if they've looked at their own expenses and the money they're spending on the non-mandated busing, it is on our budget and it's $100,000 to Hanson and it's $400,000 to Whitman. And that's not a decision of this committee, but it's something that the towns would work with the district and, and determine. I, I would add three items to that on non-mandated busing. Number one, I would just ask that there are many families who choose to not even put their kid on the bus. So they're dropping them off already. So is there the ability to give an opt-out option to those parents right off the bus, right off the bat? Second, there is pay to ride, and there's all area towns charging for buses from Abington, $250, Rockland, $275, Weymouth, $235.
As a regional school district, Dawn, we can't charge for buses, but we get reimbursement.
We, we can charge in the non-mandated piece, but that's not a school committee decision. That's a, the town selectmen vote the, or approve their non-mandated. We don't, we don't, they just pay us for it, so it's really their decision.
Understood.
I, I know it's a.
And I guess that's my comment in regards to this compromise. It is, the towns keep looking at us to compromise, but what, are they looking at their own expenses? They're choosing to pay used taxpayer money right now for empty seats on a bus that perhaps a parent could offer. They're choosing to pay, use taxpayer money right now for empty seats on a bus that perhaps a parent could opt out if. The towns just gave that option. I'm, I'm just having this dialogue. And the third is that there would always be a waiver, right? If someone, if we, if the towns did decide to do a pay to ride, someone couldn't afford it, there'd be a waiver. And that's my thoughts.
Thank you. Mr. Small.
And that just circles me back around. This is up to the towns to come up with a compromise. If the towns can figure out something, it's almost like, you know, Whitman loaning Hanson money or giving them money to go toward the school budget. But the school budget's the school budget. And that's what I feel we need to put forward. And we need to put forward a viable budget that's not going to hurt kids any worse than we've been doing for the past years. Because we haven't been able to advance and all we've done is cut and take away programs. And I don't know that there's anything left on the bone to cut. Uh, that's again, my personal. It's the towns. The towns need to come up with a compromise. We need to come up with. A budget that the school district can live with.
Thank you. Mr. Howard, you had your hand up?
Yeah. So I think while I acknowledge the school committee's responsibility to set the budget, the school committee also has the obligation to set the assessment methodology, which was done. Um, and I think, again, going back to what we talked about all along was there would be a compromise. And the fact that, uh, it sounds like Whitman is looking to have that town meeting, uh, would, to me, indicate that we should be at a point of compromise. We talked about it two weeks ago. So if we're moving forward, we need a compromise. Without a compromise, you know, we can talk about it. My, my position is simply not going to change.
Anyone else?
This is, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Voice.
Mr. Boy.
If I can just, if I can just follow up on what Mr. Howard was just saying. I've talked to a number of individuals in Whitman. Um, I'm not going to be harsh about it. I mean, I, I, I would wish there was something. But it, this, this, this is just not to put, to do that, Chris. And I would almost ask you and Mr. O'Brien and Mr. Hayes and Mr. Howard. And, and I've mentioned this before, these are the things I would say, but do you see that there's a socioeconomic value in your community? Where things have been better for you? Um, you probably have more two-parent homes. You've got, and I'm really not meaning to step over the line with anyone. It's like, I don't get into personal. You've got, you, you just got a better, you, you, a gig in a sense. And the affordability is what. That whole formula came out to be. Um, you know, I was still getting people coming at me and saying, um, I think there was one comment when we were on the phone last time, and they would say. You know, if you paid attention at your local meetings or if you, or your local train. Things and so forth. Um, you know, it, well, if I was on a FinCom. And if, I never heard of anything going back in oh seven or eight or nine. And nothing had ever come forward. And if it did at that time, it probably would have been a lot more easier. It's a, it's a huge thing to swallow, but you know, it. It, it's, it's, it's there for balance. I've seen so many videos on it on YouTube. Um, and, and it's just strength in that. So Chris, I'm sorry, I'm not just trying to throw it on you, but. When I do hear the Hanson reps here say, you know, they can't vote this, they can't vote it. I mean, you, you got your own personal reasons, but. Um, you know, I think we need to make those on education reason. Yeah. Well, we respect everyone. That's it.
Anyone else?
Yeah, uh, Bob?
Mr. Jones.
Yeah, that, I, I guess that's not just Chris's, I think that's all of our take in Hanson. We're hearing that there's a compromise going back and forth. It directly affects on how we are going to vote on everything as a whole. Uh, if we're going to have to do an override, not do an override, like we can't make a judgment on that because we need, need to know how much Whitman is going to be. We keep hearing back that Whitman's holding up. I don't know if that's true. But it hasn't been finalized and there's some kind of a compromise. We need to know what that is before we could take this vote. So it, it does matter. And this is the way we've always done it. So yeah, I think you got to give us some time and, and we need to know what this is. Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien.
And just to echo on, uh, what, what Mike and Chris were talking about. Well, number one, the last two weeks is going to be a game changer for all the towns. So without even getting into what's going to happen after this crisis is all about. But if you remember the last school committee meeting, my, my patients had had enough and I wanted the selectmen and FinComs to come to the next meeting, which unfortunately we, we have to do this way. I, I, I agree. I mean, my position's not going to change until I get them in the room and find out exactly what's going on. So.
Mr. Scriven. I just think that's reasonable. Which, which one's reasonable? The last three members we've heard from have, have, you know, a reasonable argument and, and a reason for wanting to hold off and hear from the towns. Um, as they told us when we met the first time in our subcommittee, um, the second floor of the high school. You know, they were going to work it out and we were going to take our vote to do statutory with, it, it, you know, in good faith that they were going to, uh, be able to move forward in a compromise. So I'm, I'm for one, waiting for that as well. So, um, I, Ms. Byers.
I'm confused because I remember at one meeting, they were asking us to give them a number. So I don't know what has changed now or where that stands, but I believe it, if anyone has any input.
Yes. Small.
Uh, yes, uh, you know, the chair of the Hanson Board of Selectmen said that they couldn't move forward without us voting a budget. Uh, you know, the one thing I'd just like to ask everyone, if you look deep inside, do you see us approving any sort of a budgetary number? That is not level service. Overall budget number, no matter how it's sti- stopped. Uh, but the overall budget, do you see us doing that? You know, would you see us decimating and cutting two, three, four hundred thousand dollars? Cause it would probably take more than that to try and get Hanson to a, you know, to a footing. Of, you know, what, you know, and you hear so many different back channel, different bits of gossip. But it would be, you know, quite a lot because at that point you're at a sixty, forty split. So for every hundred thousand, you know, it's sixty thousand off of Whitman's bill and forty thousand off of Hanson's bill. You know, so a million bucks gets him four hundred. Uh, you know, can, can we, at least in me, to me, I can't see us doing anything but at least level services, especially after last year.
Okay, well.
You know, for what we need for an overall budget.
If you remember correctly, the budget number that the superintendent and the assistant superintendent gave us was fifty five million, forty thousand, two hundred and thirty eight dollars. We, that was required. The required with the four teachers was fifty five thousand, three hundred, fifty five million, three hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and thirty eight dollars. Those were your two budget numbers. That was for level service.
And the only other thing if I could add?
Fifty five million. I'm sorry.
If I could add, Mr. Hayes?
Go ahead, go.
If, uh, just one, one other thing. We, we voted the statutory, yes, we did. But at the same time, we're not in control of that. If we had put the agreement method to town hall floor. And the, the method was rejected, the overall budget can stay the same. Uh, the method gets rejected, now you're twice back to the school committee or send it back, we send it back. And then it goes to the super wide, uh, you know, the super town meeting. And from then on in, statutory is the only method that can be utilized. And I firmly believe knowing the residents of Whitman, knowing that when it got to town hall floor and they got up and said, this is what the difference. Says, you're going to hear, it would end up being statutory.
Mr. O'Brien.
So, and not to speak for the other members from Hanson because I could be wrong, but I'm just going to throw it out there. I, I can definitely say for three of us, not even venture to say for four of us, you're not going to get the vote tonight. So. I mean, and again, we can go round and round with it. This is all stuff we've heard before, but. And I'll throw it to Mr. Hayes, Mr. Howard and, and Mr. Jones. You know, you, you need to get one of us to swing and it's not going to happen tonight. And you, the other three can, can speak on that. So.
Well, I, I don't have a motion, Mr. O'Brien, with a number in, in, I'm hearing a general consensus of the committee. Oh, I shouldn't say a general consensus. I, I'm, I'm hearing that. We're looking for a number from certain people and I'm hearing that we're looking for a compromise or some sort of, uh, a wiggle room type thing. From other members. So I, I'm, I'm looking for your direction.
Well, again, for my, I go back.
I'm motioning to hold off for another week. We motioned to vote on the superintendent. And, and I'm not being, I'm, I'm, I'm not being, um, not trying to be hard. Superintendent has sent, sent us two numbers, fifty five million, forty thousand, two hundred and thirty eight dollars for level service required two thousand. Excuse me, two thousand and twenty one budget. Are the required level service with adding four teachers was fifty five million, three hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and thirty eight dollars. Now you can vote to wait another week, push it down the road, see what's coming up, or somebody can make a motion and we can take a vote. What's your pleasure? It's the committee's pleasure. I'll, I'll entertain anything that you would like to hear. Mr. Small has his hand up.
Can I get into this?
Mr. Colletti, go ahead. Sorry, Fred.
Yeah. Um, been waiting quite a while here with my hand up.
You know what, Miss Dan, let me interrupt you.
I even pushed the little hand thing. I don't know if anybody uses that, the lower of the hand, raised hand.
Whatever it is, it's not working.
I'm sorry, I apologize. I agree with the, with the Hanson people are saying, and, um, they're waiting for a compromise. But you also have to remember, um, like what their small is saying. It won't matter about a compromise. We still have to set a budget. The compromise is going to be how the towns are paying it. And if we don't get something soon, because I don't see this compromise coming that we've been told is coming. I think, I just think it's, they're kicking the can down the road like we're accustomed to. And the comment, this is the way we've always done it. We've always set the assessment, the, the budget and handed it off to the towns and it's up to them to pay the bill. So I do understand what Hanson's side is saying because, you know, there, it's a massive swing to their side. But unless we can get the, um, people that are supposed to be working on the compromise, we set a date, get them to do it. We're going to get nowhere. We're not having a budget. The state's taking over by June thirtieth. This is just another, I think, another tactic they use to push it down the road. Um, which is unfortunate because we're, we're falling behind every year on this. We take the charge, we say we're going to do something, then we have to come down to, to meet the thing. The whole thing about the assessment, it isn't an increase. The assessment we set is supposed to be the bill the towns are supposed to be paying for the school system. That's something we really have to start looking into. And, you know, maybe we have to fight our, our selectmen and people to say, let's get on board, let, let, let's get this thing to work. Whatever the compromise they're thinking about, let's move it forward. Yes, they needed a number. We gave them a number. The number was so they can go back and start doing the compromise. We weren't going to see anything within a week, no, because they have to meet. But we have to set a budget and we have to set it soon. I'd say we have to meet next week. Come up with a budget because remember, we can only come down, we can never go back up on the budget. But we do have to give the town something to start working with. We can't be held hostage on a compromise. Because no matter what happens, if we set something by June thirtieth, we are going to be under the state. And I don't see these towns getting together and doing things like they should be because it should have already been done. I mean, that's all I'm going to say. I, I see both, you know, both sides of the fence here. But it's our, our duty is to set budgets. It's up to the towns to figure out what they're going to do with that budget and how it's going to get paid. It goes to the town floor. Of course, it's rejected. It comes back to us anyways. So we, we really have.
Thank you, Dan. Sorry, I couldn't see your hand.
Uh, I'd like to make a suggestion. Uh, you know, and I'm fine. I think we started this discussion with waiting till we could get some more information. Uh, but also knowing that there were many people that wanted to either, uh, give testimony or ask questions. I would say if we could have an email, uh, address, or perhaps say direct things to Michelle. That if anyone has any questions in the public for the next week or until our next meeting, they can email them to her. If they want to provide written testimony to be read at our next meeting, then they can do so. So that way there, their voices are heard. Uh, we can ask both Whitman and Hanson to give us a report as to where they stand. Uh, because we do legally have to set a budget. And I can appreciate, you know, the position once again of our, uh, Hanson, uh, fellows. But at the same time, we've got to get, we've got to get moving on this one way or the other. And I don't want to leave anybody out. We are waiting for more information anyways. I don't see the harm in waiting another week. And I also am cognizant to the fact that Jeff wants to double check, uh, with, uh. Uh, what you call it, uh, our council.
Okay, thank you, Fred. Mr. O'Brien.
No, I, I, I agree. And I, I was actually just putting it out in the, in the chat. I'm saying we're not going to vote on a budget or anything like that. But again, we've been hearing for a long time that Whitman and Hanson have had discussions, but they have not unveiled what those discussions are to us. You know, is, is Whitman and Hanson, now the two towns are going to pick up the snow pile of the budget so that frees us up to be able to use it for the educational end of it. I mean. That, that's what I'm looking for. So I'm looking for the information from them. And again, next time we meet, if we're still doing it this way, invite the selectmen and FinCom because I, I know Mrs. McGann has twenty, thirty, twenty plus students on this a couple, once a day anyway. So we can invite them onto it. So then if we've got to do it this way, that's okay. So instead of in person.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but there were, I want to say it was about a month ago, maybe four meetings ago, rather. Um, that the towns were present and they said they were all looking for a number. We were talking about voting the budget. Think maybe we did and it didn't pass, of course, because we were looking for more information. But we gave them an idea of the numbers that we were talking about and they said they couldn't really come to a decision until they had those numbers. Well, they've had those numbers. It's been over a month and we're still sitting here in the dark waiting for some sort of information for them, from them, rather. And the last, what, three or four meetings now, we just keep having the same discussion, going around and around in a circle, not getting anywhere. We're not making any decisions. Has anybody asked the town, come right out and said, hey, listen, it's been a month. You know what numbers we're talking about. Have you come to a compromise?
Mr. Howard.
I don't.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Hallie. Will you finish? I'm sorry. Keep going.
Yeah, I'm just getting frustrated because it's, this is the same meeting we've had for four different times now and we're not getting anywhere. Everybody's saying, well, we need more information from them. We need to, you know, we need to know what's going on, but they're saying that they need numbers, which we gave them, but we're still not getting anywhere.
Yeah, just, so, so a few things. So I think in much the same way that, that Fred, you were talking about getting to Whitman Town meeting. And having a budget that isn't going to work, I think that's, that's my concern in Hanson, right? I mean, everyone can pull up the video where Desi came in and talked about a compromise and rolling things over a few years. Um, and if we just absorb, you know, this, if this is so, so to speak, just kind of forced upon the town of Hanson. I, I think we're going to end up in the exact same place where we're going to, we deal with this one twelfth anyway. So to me, it's, it's less about kicking the can down the road and it's about, let's figure it out now. I think the other thing that's really important is we met, I think, two weeks ago, and I think we do need to be cognizant and, and I agree with everyone's frustration. Um, but we do need to be cognizant. A lot has happened over the last couple of weeks. And I'm sure a lot of the folks at the town, on both towns have had a lot to deal with over the last couple of weeks in terms of things going on. So. I do think maybe coming back together with the understanding that. We got to figure this out because it's not, it's going to be a lose, lose, lose. It's going to be a lose for the district. It's going to be a lose for the town of Hanson. And it's going to be a lose for the town of Whitman if we can't figure out a way where everyone chips in and figures out a way to get this done. chips in and figures out a way to get this done for us to move forward. So I think if we can do that in the next meeting, that's fine. Um, Jeff, I do know we had an open question about our ability to even look at the assessment methodology, I don't know if we got an answer on that. Again, I know things have been crazy, but to me, that, we can follow up with that, maybe after the fact, or for the next meeting, but to me, it's, we, how do we come up with a way to get everyone together and get this compromise nailed out? And I'd much rather do it on April first or second than, uh, after town meeting rejects it on, in either town.
Mr. Small.
Uh, and piggybacking on that, Chris, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we empower our superintendent, uh, and hopefully he's willing, to get involved with both, uh, town administrators, and try and find out, and if we want to put a school committee member on the meeting, you know, do a meeting like this, you know, Zoom meeting, and sit there and say, what the heck is going on? Where do we stand? We want some direction. Uh, and give Hanson the opportunity to tell Whitman, you know, all on the same thing, because you keep hearing, you know, different things back and forth, and, I mean, I've heard two or three different reiterations of a different story here in Whitman, depending upon who you talk to. And I know in talking to a fellow, uh, member from Hanson, you know, they've heard saying, you know, something that I've never heard of. Uh, so, you know, you, you start to wonder exactly what's going on. Uh, Jeff being an independent third party, uh, perhaps he could be able to bring people together, or we select someone from our committee, if that's what it is, you know, that can try and reach out to the, uh, two-town administrators and figure out what the heck is going on, so we, we can have some direction for our next meeting, you know, and enough pussyfooting around. If they don't have an agreement, and they can't come to something, you know, I'm sure there's gonna be finger pointing, this, that, and the other thing, but at the same time, that's gonna be their problem, unfortunately. We have to set a budget, and we're gonna go round and round. Chris, to the point where the budget gets rejected in Hanson? Yeah, it probably would. Uh, you know, the methodology and whatnot. Uh, the only thing I could, you know, hope and pray is that people would perhaps understand that it doesn't change anything by rejecting the methodology. You know, it's the total dollar amounts that end up, uh, you know, being the difference. I just wanna try and avoid state control, I wanna try and avoid a one-twelfth budget based upon this year's, uh, financing, because I think that just decimates us, and it kills kids. Yeah.
Okay, Fred, you, you started out with a motion, and it got.
You want a motion? Mr. Small would motion.
Wait a minute before you make the motion. I don't think we even need to vote it. The superintendent is sitting right here, it's part of what I would consider his job, and he's shaking his head that he is more than willing to do this. So empower, if you wanna go to the vote, but I mean, I don't think we need to do.
So what I'm hearing is, is the committee would like me to reach out to Mr. St, uh, John, Stanbrook, and Mr. Lyman on a Zoom, the three of us, and gather information, what they, because they've both been involved in the conversations with, in, in compromise. I'm not reaching out to the selectmen, I'm not reaching out to the fincom, I'm looking at the two-town administrators and the superintendent having a Zoom meeting to get some information for you, for what I'm assuming next Wednesday, as a vote or a, so that you have information on what the discussions were like, a potential compromise, so that you can move forward with a budget. The, the caveat, and I'm gonna say with the, with the caveat of, the, I need seven votes affirmative of this member committee to move a vote, uh, uh, an assessment method to the towns. There has never been, what I'm hearing from Desi and from our attorney, there is no legal precedent if we don't get a budget out of committee to go to the towns, right? So I, I'm very well willing to meet, or to have a, a conversation, a, a traditional three-way phone call conversation, or a new Zoom conversation with the two-town administrators. Is that what I'm hearing?
With the, hopefully with, uh, and hopefully everyone else would concur, with the full support of the school committee, in being able to get the, that information to us, and as quickly as possible, even if it's, you know, tomorrow, the next day, you know, we don't have to wait till next Wednesday to receive a little update, perhaps.
Yeah. Tomorrow, I'm gonna say tomorrow, I'm gonna be doing what the commissioner says for the four thousand kids that I have right now. Um, I'll, I'll do an invite, and hopefully we can connect tomorrow, or Friday, uh, or Monday, but right now, whatever the commissioner rolls out for education, I wanna make sure that we get that out to our leadership, and to our teachers, and to our parents, uh, sooner than later, but I have no issues with trying to set up an appointment with Frank and John sooner than later.
Thank you, it's very much appreciated, and I know you have so, so much on your plate right now as well, so.
I have the chair of, I'm sorry, Fred, I'm sorry for interrupting, I have the chair of the, um, Hanson Board of Selectmen texting me saying, there is nothing to find out, they haven't made any progress, they've been dealing with the pandemic since our last meeting. Um, they, they've really been trying to deal with protecting people, and it, and it's been a difficult situation, and, and there's nothing to update us with that she knows of right at this present time. I mean, I know she's been working very hard at it, but Jeff, if you could connect with them, and, and is everybody consensual? I mean, I'll take a vote if you want, but I mean, it's part of what the superintendent's job is.
So I'm complete, I'm in complete support. The one thing I guess I would just suggest, uh, in the interest of at least the committee's time for, for some discussion here is, uh, you know, I, I'm not sure it's worth us having a meeting unless we know there's a compromise. I guess at some point we need to do that, but, you know, if, what I don't wanna do is sit here on next Wednesday and have the exact same conversation, if at all possible. So if we get to a point where the towns can publicly talk about a compromise that they have, I think, great, we can move forward. If we're not having that, then I'm not, I'm not sure what we're doing next Wednesday that's any different than tonight.
Well, Chris, I, I tend, I tend to agree with you, I tend to agree with the Alley, Alley Taylor, and, and everybody that's spoken this evening about, we had three or four meetings, and we discussed the same thing. From what I'm hearing, it's like, Jeff, to do this and officially get back and see if we can, um, we'll tentatively set a meeting for Wednesday night, let him contact me, so to speak, and we'll make a judgment to see if anything's changed, and if nothing's changed, I agree with you, having a meeting next Wednesday night is kind of a waste of our time, because all we're gonna be doing, and that don't mean that in the sense that I just said it, it's not gonna change any, because this same verbiage has gone around this table now for three or four meetings. Go ahead.
Well, I just have a question then, so if, if that is the agreed-upon thing, that unless there's new updates, that there would be no need to meet next week, then would that be then saying that the committee doesn't have a, doesn't have a budget to put forward?
I thought legally, we, yeah, I thought legally, we, we're not at our deadline.
Right. I mean, right now, I'm looking at, and again, it's fluctuating, so I, I think, I think I need to get something to them by April fourth, but that could change. I have two different dates, I have a, a date of April thirtieth, which came out of the blue, and then I have a thirty-day from-town meeting, which would be April fourth for a May fourth meeting. So it gives me some flexibility, if that, if I can get some more clarification on the drop-dead date, I will let the committee know tomorrow or Friday, but right now, I, I mean, I, I will meet, I will speak to Frank and, and John, and go from there.
Before I go to Fred, Chris, as, as you heard tonight, there is one change. The superintendent did give you figures this evening, telling you what, a two-point-three million dollar?
Two-point-five-nine.
Two-point-five-nine million dollar cut would be, how many employees that would be, and that's new information, and then a one-point-three million dollar cut, what would that look, would look like, and how many employees, just to give you a, an idea of how many employees are at Whitman middle, and how many employees that was, forty-two?
Forty-four.
Forty-four. So that, that information is, is new, and that was something that we, we sent, um, the superintendent to look after. Fred, I'm sorry, I jumped in the middle there.
No, and even if we're not prepared to vote, uh, I would think to be on public record to have a meeting, if, if it's a ten, fifteen-minute meeting, and we can't agree on a vote, or we can't, we have a motion in a second, but the motion doesn't pass, at least to show that, uh, you know, we are still meeting and diligently trying, so to speak. Uh, perhaps not with all the discussion back and forth, because, yeah, it's Groundhog Day.
Dan, I can't see your hand up, I'm sorry, I see that you're messaging, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to see if we can get that, uh, update from Jeff on a new sheet, and pull it up tall?
Yep.
So do we have the same numbers across the board, or are we reading different numbers anywhere?
Yep. We'll, we'll take care of that, Dan. Have Michelle send that out.
Okay, so, uh, everybody know where we're headed right now?
It's a bad situation.
It is a difficult situation. In your packet, just to remind you, it says important date to remember, April seventh, two thousand and twenty, current date of reopening schools, that is not the current date of reopening schools, the governor changed that since this packet went out, the current date for opening schools for all the public that may be listening is May fourth, two thousand and twenty. So that date that is on, on your, in your packet, or if it's electronic, is not a current date, because it changed late this afternoon. If there's nothing else to bring before this committee, I entertain a motion to adjourn and remind you, the next committee meeting will be one week from today.
Mr. Small motions to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Taylor.
I'm sorry? Second.
Mr. Small motions to adjourn.
Seconded by Mrs. Taylor.
Thanks, Alley. Any discussion? All, all those in favor, roll call. Dawn?
Yes.
Fred?
Mr. Small votes yes.
Chris? Howard?
Yes.
Chris Scriven?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Mr. Colletti?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes, yes. Good night, everyone, and thank you for your patience with me this evening. This was the first time we've ever done this, and it was, uh, a little bit, little difficult on the start, but thank you all, stay safe, keep social distancing.
You will.